You ready? I'm sorry, I was looking around, I was like, I know she's here.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and your attention to this tonight. Wanted to give you just a brief overview of our agency history and how we go about doing the things that we do. But I have some friends and constituents that are here tonight, and I would like to take just a minute to introduce the visitors that are here. We have both park staff and members of our park advisory board. So if the park staff would please stand first, and then we'll introduce you. In the back, I'm gonna start at the very back, is Nancy Lee Gomer, who is our marketing supervisor for the department. Jim Kent, who's the superintendent of parks. We have Joe James, our park planner, landscape architect. Next to him is Ryan Graham, our historian for the parks. We have Kent James, who is the supervisor for the youth activity park out at Darden Prairie. Dennis De Jong is next to him, who's the assistant director. Next to him is Ben Grossman. Ben started out as our forester with the parks department, and he's now the natural resource supervisor. And then in the back, behind him, is Dennis Evans, who's our acquisitions coordinator. Thank you. In addition, we have members of our parks advisory board. If you would, please stand. We have Ruth Miller, who's the chair of the board. We have Shelley Mockens, who's one of the members. Larry Henderson, one of the members as well. And Bob Wohler, who's the vice chair of the park advisory board. Thank you all. As I said, I wanted to give you just a real brief overview of the agency history, talking a little bit about the open space plan that you may or may not have heard about before, but we'll talk about it. The use tax referendum that supports this initiative. The establishment and role of the park advisory board. And the development sequence from acquisition to development to construction in the parks, how we go about that, the steps that we do, and why we do what we do. The St. Charles County Parks and Recreation Department continues to build a legacy by developing a regional park system that offers unique parks, diverse facilities, along with a very broad range of programs and special events, all of which provide county residents with regional parks and recreation experiences that enhance the historical and natural heritage here in the county. Since its inception, the department has been very diligently following a comprehensive open space plan that promotes recreation naturally, preserving nature and history for all citizens' enjoyment. The county, the St. Charles County Parks and Recreation Department traces its origin actually back to the fall of 1995, when a group of St. Charles County citizens formed the Parks Recreation and Cultural Facilities Task Force. Their mission was to address open space and cultural issues for the St. Charles County 2010 master plan. The task force members actually did not act alone in this, but they worked in conjunction with consultants that were hired by the county to develop an open space plan. The vision of the citizens' task force and that open space plan are still guiding influences for the department today. The vision and the open space plan were the result of a lot of research, but it included the study of possible options and citizen input that occurred from focus groups, stakeholder meetings, public meetings, and a survey of county residents. After nearly one year of that research, in October 1996, the task force concluded that the creation of the county parks of a regional county parks and recreation department was the best option to conserve the valuable natural and historic resources that were here in St. Charles County. While the focus was on larger regional parks, it was also determined, though, that unique sites of historic or natural resource features should also be preserved, even if they did not meet that 100-acre requirement of a regional park. And lastly, that task force concluded that 50% of all land acquired should be maintained in a natural state. That's why we have a real emphasis on forestry people, natural resource people, and such. During the vision process, it became very clear that county residents also felt that it was real important for the county to concentrate on addressing unmet needs for self-directed activity out in the parks. This also ensured that county municipalities were in support of this regional initiative. We're to April 1997, and with a vision and the plan in place, voters approved the authorization of the current dedicated special use tax to finance, acquire, and develop parks and open space. Shortly thereafter, with that funding source in place, the county established the St. Charles County Parks and Recreation Department. In addition to creating that department, the county also established by ordinance the St. Charles County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This advisory board is comprised of nine members, one from each district and two members at large. This board plays an integral role as the citizens' representatives in advising or making recommendations regarding acquisition, development, maintenance of properties, maintenance of facilities, and programming. With the vision and direction of preserving the natural and historic heritage of the county, the department also has to plan on meeting the needs of the community, not just for today, but also looking to the future for the generations to come. The residents, I have to say, of this county have responded very positively to the department's vision and goals, and this is evidenced, I think, by the fact that half of all of the county properties, the park properties, have been either donated or partially donated. So half of all of our acreage, which is just right below 3,000 acres right now. These landowners saw what we were doing, and they trusted us that we would take care and preserve their property for generations to come. You've heard me speak of life estates, and I have to say, during that time, in the very late 1990s, up into the early and mid 2000s, developers were really working very, very hard here in St. Charles County. The one thing that we could offer folks that were considering preserving their property was that life estate. They would make the donation of the property to the county, and then they were enabled to live there until a time in the future when they could not anymore. But that was a real key factor, something that we could offer that the developers didn't. Now, when we go about to acquire a park property, there's some steps, of course, that have to be taken. Sometimes we will become aware of a property, and sometimes a landowner will approach us. But we start, the staff starts assembling information about the site. There's questions to be answered. Does the site meet the 100-acre or more regional park size? Or if it doesn't, are there significant natural resource or historic features there that are on-site? Where is the site located in the county? If, in collecting that information, the site does appear desirable, we will come to the council and talk to you about it, and see if this is something that we should pursue. And if it is, then we continue negotiations with the landowners. And whether it's a donation or whether it's a purchase, negotiations have to ensue. But if it looks like we're going to be able to acquire that property, then we have an appraisal performed, we have a boundary survey that's done, and we have an environmental assessment that's done, just to ensure that we don't get something that's going to cause problems. If both sides can come together on the points of negotiation, then our county councillor's office becomes involved, and they draft an agreement that then is sent to the landowner's attorney, and usually that goes back and forth a few times. But ultimately, then, when negotiations are met, we agree, then we come back to the council, and the county council then, by authorizing by ordinance, either accepting the purchase or the donation of the property. Now, once the property is acquired for park purposes, it's recognized that at some point, at some time, it will be developed into a park for public enjoyment. But just like that acquisition phase, then the development phase has many steps. First, staff will put together a conceptual plan for the property. This is done in-house. And again, there's questions asked. What can the site sustain? What restrictions may be there? And if it's a purchase, we will have public meetings to hear what citizens want to hear. And I define that purchase because often with a donation, if it's a complete donation, generally people that are donating things of great value, and we've had anywhere from a million-dollar donation property to 11 million. They have some wants and desires for their property, which we do try and entertain. But if it's a purchase, we will have citizen meetings to hear what residents would like to see there, see what citizens of the county would like to see there. That is all pulled together, those ideas are pulled together by the staff, and that's where we have what we term the initial internal conceptual plan. With that in place, then it's time to look for a consulting firm to engineer the property, engineer the plans for what will be our blueprints for construction, in essence. We put out an RFQ, and this is just to find the best consulting firm that we can for the project. That RFQ is administered through the finance department, and that whole process typically can take anywhere from two to three months. By the time it's put out, things are submitted back. And when the finance department has acquired all the submittals, they then forward them to the parks department for review and selection. And often, we'll pull a panel together. It might include the highway engineer, it might include someone from planning and zoning, different entities to come together and look at those submittals. When we make a selection and recommendation, again, it comes to the county council for approval, and then typically, it will take a consulting firm anywhere from eight to 10 months to put together the engineered plans. So this is a lengthy process that occurs. Once the plans are engineered and we have the construction plans ready to go, then it's time to find a construction company, and again, a request for bid goes out at this point for the construction of the park, and this is also handled by the finance department. And it usually takes, again, anywhere from two to three months to get the bids out, to get them returned, and then we look at who has submitted the best and the lowest bid. Once the contractor has awarded the project by the county council, construction of a new park begins, and depending on the size of the park, it could take anywhere from eight months to a year, to a few more months perhaps, to do that actual construction. Weather enters in and that sort of thing. Finally, after the park construction is completed, we definitely host a public ribbon cutting and dedication to celebrate the opening of that new park. Many people are invited, the public's invited, honor dignitaries, and everyone gets to see, to explore and see the new park areas and amenities and learn everything that that park has to offer. We were real proud, in about a 12-year period, we had opened 10 parks here to the public in St. Charles County. So for a relatively short period of time, we've had a lot of things going on, and right now, we're under construction, as you well know, with Bromelsec Park. But one I would say is that creating the St. Charles County Regional Park System, it certainly does have its challenges, but in the end, I have to say, it greatly benefits the region by preserving that natural and cultural heritage of land here in the county, and also by preserving resources for public enjoyment for generations to come. Ultimately, what happens is that the quality of life for both residents as well as visitors is greatly enhanced, and I hear this quite often. The Economic Development Center states that as they work with businesses that are looking to draw new families into the county, for workers, worker resources. Other elected officials from the municipalities, they view the county regional parks as a real enhancement and a drawing point for quality of life for residents. This slide that we're at will depict major projects that we have upcoming in the ensuing years, and I will tell you, these are subject to change. We have factors that impact us, everything, of course, from funding questions at times to opportunities that present themselves, and so often, we will shift a listing. But I wanted to walk through these with you, just so you will be aware. As I referenced, Bromelsec we look to have completed here in 2014. We're looking on the Matson Hill Park development that is near Defiance, Missouri. The historic structure, work began on the exterior of that in 2013. We'll be addressing the interior of that here in 2014, and hope to have the park engineering approved here shortly for 2014 and 15. We have a real interesting proposal on topic here. With the St. Charles Community College, we're looking to do a partnership. They have, just as we have land in reserve, the community college has some land in reserve near their main campus at Mid Rivers Dry. And what they're looking to do is encourage the community in, and we are too, in having a park area there. So we're looking at doing a partnership very similar to what we did with Missouri Department of Conservation at Bangor Island. And here, we're going to have self-directed activity, too, probably like a disc golf course, and also a trail. Trails are huge requests with our public, but a trail that would have exercise stations, but that would be it. We're not looking at putting any structures up. And the theory being here is if we can work with them for 10 years or 15 years, all the better. But if at some point, they decide they do want to expand their campus and build out, these are recreation amenities that we can pull up and move and take to another county park. So we're looking at having that partnership develop here this year. Hackman Park by St. Paul, we're looking at conceptual planning in 2014 and engineering design in 1415. And Spring Bend Park, which is over by what I call Page and Veterans Bridge and Upper Bottom Road area, it's in the St. Charles, obviously, area. It's a real special place. It has a life estate on it, but I've been talking with the owner, Mrs. Nancy Knowles, and talked with her about the possibility of going ahead and doing the engineering for the park area. For one thing, she could see, then, what we plan to do, and that it's in concert with her wishes, and quite frankly, she said, Betty, let's get this ball rolling. So even though she has a life estate there, she's very much enthused about going ahead with the development plan.
Just to remind the council, Spring Bend was the total donation.
That was the $11 million donation. Numali Parks area, which is obviously around Numali, we're looking at just conceptual planning, starting in 2015. And Fremouth Park is to be determined. It has a life estate that involved a farming operation, so it will be a way off. But lastly, what I would like to say is that I would like to come back to you in a very short period of time, when your schedule would allow it, to be able to share that conceptual plan for the Matson Hill Park, so you can see the layout for that. But I just wanted you to be aware of the steps that we go through, the staff that certainly looks and has a very strong component of input with these plans and developments. We don't just whisk them off the shelf. It's a very arduous and lengthy process on all the steps. So with that, I would say thank you, and questions or comments?
Where's the Spring Bend?
Spring Bend is at the corner, I say the corner, Upper Bottom Road fronts it, and the Page, Veterans Bridge Road, that is the side of it. It's a 100-acre piece that the Knowles had, and then subsequent to that, we've actually added on about 25 acres along the river. But the primary piece is the 100 acres, and that was the complete donation.
Betty, thanks for coming tonight and sharing the planning process with us. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trying to figure out, is there a, do you, does your department and the board, of course, have a goal for how many parks and how many total acreage of parks that ultimately that we're trying to acquire?
Well, ultimately, we've talked about 4,000 acres, ultimately, but that, of course, will take a period of time. We were looking at, population-wise, we're about third, I believe it was, of St. Louis County, and that's...
Yeah, seven years ago, when we talked about this, at that time, St. Charles, St. Louis County had a third as many, or three times more people than we did, and had 10,000 acres. So I was thinking, you know, to be equal to them, we would need 3,300 acres. Now, you know, we've grown since then, so, yeah, but our goal was to have 3,300 acres, and 4,000 would be even better.
And realistically, looking at it, that it takes patience to build that kind of a regional system. One thing that we've noticed is that as we do open a park to the public, when people see what it is that we do and how we do it, that really precipitated then more interest, more donation, more partial donations. So I think someday, we'll get there. We'll see who's left standing here by that point, but we do see that parks really seem to be important here to folks in St. Charles County. I think as they watch the development just really occurring so rapidly, there was a lot of concern about what would be preserved and kept. And as I think everybody here knows, there's a lot of people that live here in St. Charles County that their grandparents, their great-grandparents were here, there's a lot of heritage to be respected, and we're trying to show them that that's what we do. And I think we do it pretty doggone well. We've got a great staff of people that support that.
If I could add, like I said, we're probably a little bit behind St. Louis County, and of course, way ahead of all the rest of the collar counties in terms of the number of acres per resident. But it was interesting, your staff did some research farming on off-road trails, and we actually have more miles of off-road trails per resident than either the city of St. Louis or St. Louis County. So we're ahead of them on that.
And we've had, a lot of that was done and built by volunteers. We've got a really good core of volunteer help that love St. Charles County trails, so.
John, did you have a...
I just want to say, you know, as long as I've been on the council, I've just watched the parks department grow and develop, and it's just incredible what they've done in such a short period of time, and the quality that we have in St. Charles County. Our residents are very fortunate, you know, to live in St. Charles County and have this park system. It's a diverse system, and it's just outstanding, so a lot of kudos to the parks department.
I might add, if there's one thing that I think that, there's so many of our citizens that just don't know how good these parks are, you'd be surprised how many people I talk to and I'll point something out, and they'll go, "Yeah, I went out there, that's unbelievable." But they didn't know it was there, you know? So I think our citizens, you know, they, you know, once they really find out what we have available, I think there's even going to be even more support.
Well, we're really looking at, a lot of the social media, Colleen's been a huge help with us on that, because what we're finding is people don't really seem to respond to paper anymore, and so as we find things going out on the web and on all the different outlets for the social media, people are responding to that very well. So it's an ongoing effort, without a doubt.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Cronin ended up not being able to be here tonight, but in some ways, this originated with him, and one of the things that he had asked, Betty, was specifically about the role of the advisory council and whether or not they get a chance to see all the plans and take a position on them. And so I don't know, Betty, if you or the council want to comment on that?
As chairman of the advisory board, one of the things that we do, get a real privilege to do, is to see what's happening in the parks and what plans are coming up, and we get a chance to support those plans that are coming through the park department, and just, it just amazes me, I'm, I started my third term on the parks advisory board, and I just have gained so much knowledge. They've come and taught me how they do the maintenance on the parks, they've trained, how they train the volunteers to work in the parks, they show us the plans coming up, we hear about future development, we hear about things that are potential donations, and then we are given the opportunity that if we know ones that would like to donate land, we can pass those names along and help support the parks in that area.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else have any...
I was making a comment, Betty, with Clonak Park, people, when they come out and visit with us in the finances stuff, I always tell them, we go to that park and the cabins that we have to rent, or half the people, no one even knows that we have cabins out there, but once they do, I mean, that's a great park. You guys did a great job on that.
Well, somebody knows about them because they're rented out every weekend during this, so.
That's a great place.
Thank you.
How's the horseshoe place doing?
It's doing well. You know, they work very, very hard at trying to get a younger clientele in to learn, but I know they've worked with us real well on different things to, even having washer tournaments there, because again, it gets new clientele in for them. But, you know, and I'll tell you, you want to meet just an amazing group of people, go talk to the horseshoe people, because those folks...
Eddie, you might explain that, because I think only two of the current councilmen were on the council when that agreement was passed.
We have, at Quail Ridge Park, we have the National Horseshoe Museum there, and it's their national headquarters. The group that really spearheaded this was the, actually, it was the Numali Horseshoe Club. And apparently, as the horseshoe clubs around the country were kind of vying to have the national headquarters moved to their area, some of you may know Joe Farren from the Numali area, he came to talk to me, and he said, "What do you think about this?" I said, "Sounds pretty good to me, let's see what happens." And so we made a proposal, and what they have is essentially, I think it's called a ground lease, as I recall. They built the building, the facility there. We have the lease to them of, I think it's three acres total. That is for a long, long period, but they pay their $100 every year. But they staff the facility, and they have tournaments there, they've had state tournaments, they're vying for the national tournament. Just, it's been a really wonderful activity, very, very positive, out at Quail Ridge Park, and they changed their name to the Quail Ridge Horseshoe Club, too. So it's been very, very positive, and a good partnership.
Five years ago, Betty, was it?
Hmm, probably, six maybe? You just started, I think. That was your first...
That was your first event, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, Joe was still county executive and Steve was director of administration, so about eight years ago.
Eight years. Time flies, but it's been very good.
Very good. Anybody else?
Yeah, Betty, talk about the facility down in Portage and some of the limits we have on what we can do with it, because it is basically flood buyout property. And the same would be true of the property that we've allowed the city to develop.
Missouri Mobile Home Park?
The old Missouri Mobile Home Park.
Hideaway Harbor is one of our smaller parks, but the county owned that property, as the county executive referred to after the '93 flood, and we got it as a flood buyout. It's kind of unique, because there's two boat ramps on to, for access to the Mississippi. One is on the Mississippi, one is into Weber Lake, which has a nice historic history of itself. Weber Lake was a huge recreation area back in the '30s, roughly? Yeah, before our time. So, it's a very pretty area, and I have to say, I have to give a plug, too, because Nancy, Lee, where are you, back there? Saturday, we had a wonderful Eagle Days event out there, and she had gotten a live eagle to come from the World Bird Sanctuary, and Lewis, who routinely flies around Cardinal Stadium for the opening day, he was there. So, we had lots of little kids getting their pictures taken with this big eagle. It was fabulous day, even though it was cold. But it does have a lot of restrictions on it. It's a, if you go out there, it's a gravel parking lot. We can't have asphalt, because it would lift up in a flood, so it has to remain gravel. It has to be a pit toilet, because we have to get it pumped before every flood. So, it's a pretty basic area. Now, you look across at the cliffs of the Great River Road, it's fabulous viewing and, like I say, great access, but it does have a lot of restrictions on it. And it is, it's a floodway. I have boated over that park. It was the first park I ever boated over. That was one of mine. But it's a challenge, and if other areas like you referred to, they will have a lot of restrictions and a lot of challenges. Anything else?
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Betty, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming and bringing your staff and members of the board. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your time and educating, well, speaking for myself, anyway, educating me on the whole process. Some of these other guys have been around longer than I have, so thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Steve, did you have anything else?
I was going to say what you just said. Thanks.
Thank you. We have miscellaneous topics on the agendas. Are there any miscellaneous topics? If not, then we will adjourn until the 7:00 regular meeting scheduled to start, so we've got a little 25-minute break.